All right, this meeting is called for orders. This is a joint general government subcommittee town council meeting. Today is Wednesday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. It is six P M. and we are meeting in the veterans meeting room. Agenda item number two is roll call. Councilor Daniel is excused. Councilor Dow is excused. Councilor Kelly, chairman, is present. By operation of section five B of the town council rules and regulations, ex officio member, chairman of the town council, Scott Lazo, will sit in on this meeting. And counselor, counselor Chan here will also sit in on this meeting to create, to have a quorum. Counselor Lazo.
President.
Counselor Chanier.
Present.
We have a call. Agenda item number three, review and discuss the reappointment of Denise Clements as citizen member to the general government subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through June thirty of twenty twenty six pending completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
No move.
For the record, Councilor Dow is present. And Counselor Chanier will leave the table. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, for Councilor Dow's sake, I'm gonna reread agenda item number three. Review and discuss the reappointment of Denise Clements as a citizen member to the general government subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through June thirty of twenty twenty six pending completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you have anything to say?
I'd just say Denise has served this.
She's served twenty years, decades.
Yes.
Yeah, she does like a job. And she's very thorough on all her discussions and subject matters, so I highly recommend it.
Just no further discussion in hold favor. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number four, review and discuss approval of the third amendment to lease and lease extension between the town of Southbridge landlord and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Motor Vehicles Division, also known as the Registry of Motor Vehicles Division tenant, to commence on September fifteenth, twenty twenty five through September fourteenth, twenty twenty six, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents and entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
No move, second.
Town manager.
Thank you. So for those who are aware, the R M B has been a tenant of ours at the location on La Rochelle Way for a long period of time. About two years ago, they had negotiated a two-year extension indicating that they were gonna put out a request for proposals. My outline, my memo that I sent to the town council outlines all those dates. They did approach us, they went out for the first, our, their hope was to be in their new location by June of this year. They went out for the first request for proposal, they had one respondent. They determined that that respondent was not a responsive and responsible location. So they issued, they had quite a delay in issuing it. They had looked at some local properties here to see if there was people interested. They then opened up a second R F P for locations in the Sturbridge and Southbridge area. They received three responses, all three are in Southbridge. However, it's gonna take a little bit of time for them to negotiate the lease and have them build out the location. We are not aware of what location they have selected. They have not released that information yet, but they have assured me that it is in the town of Southbridge. They requested a one-year extension on the lease. I recommended a three percent increase, which was the three percent we did last year. Two years before that was a twenty-three percent lease or increase. Conversations when it came to square footage. They pay currently twelve dollars and seventy-three cents per square foot. In other R M B locations, those locations include their heat, their oil, custodial services as part of the lease, square footage. Here, they pay for that all separate from the lease. So while our dollars per square foot is lower than, like in Dudley, or Webster, Dudley, they have the sheriff's office, they pay their nineteen dollars per square foot, but everything's inclusive. Here, all they pay for is the rent of the building and they reimburse us for electricity, oil, and they pay for their own custodial services. So I recommended approval of this lease extension for one year.
Any further discussion? Notice, nobody's raising their hand. Call in favor.
Upstand, or no, whatever you call it.
Yes.
I'm not approve it, zero, no, two, one.
Two, one, okay. Agenda item number five, review and discuss land lease parcels and resolution to approve of a lease of airport property over a term of twenty years. Airport and allow the town manager and airport commission to proceed with negotiating lease with potential parties. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for approval.
Director.
Discussion.
Thank you. So I know this is Rick Clements, chairman of the airport commission is here. So this would be for land lease with potential for occupants to build some additional T hangars, one of which we are building right now under a grant. And I'll let Rick explain it, he's worked on, we've had the contract initially reviewed by legal as well as others, contract that we, land leases that have been negotiated. So we'd like the opportunity to pursue this and I'll turn it over to Rick for any further information.
Thank you, just a little bit of history on land leases in airports. It's something that happens in Massachusetts, a lot of airports lease land so people can build a hangar. That way you're not giving up the control of the property. Now, Southbridge has had leases in the past, one of the hangars that the town now operates and we rent out is, was a land lease hangar. So basically, in the past, it was originally, it would be up to twenty years that you can put a term and after twenty years, the property gets moved over to the ownership of the town. So that's how we took over the other, the other hangar. Today, with the cost of buildings being what they are, pretty much everybody's gone to a twenty and twenty or up to forty-year lease period. So that way they can amortize the buildings over that, that amount of time. So we've been talking about, and this particular lease, we've gotten draft in front of us. It has been reviewed by the state and the federal, we'll have to go back and have them look at it again, because FAA is very, is critical about how these leases are set up as well. Basically, we have one very interested party from Worcester that wants to come in and build a hundred by a hundred hangar and bring in some turboprop aircraft, which does two things. It brings in jet fuel type aircraft, which we've been trying to get jet fuel and, you know, it's the chicken or the egg. So now if we get the planes here, then we may be able to get the tank from, from the Mass D O T or federal grants to put in jet fuel at the airport. But it also, and we get, if we get one move from Worcester, I think we'll start to see some other people coming from other areas. Also by having these, these larger planes or faster planes, it works to our master plan. As we've talked about in the past, our master plan way out is to extend the runway five hundred feet. It's thirty-five hundred feet now currently, and we want to go to four thousand, which again brings a little bit bigger planes in, brings in more clientele. So that's one, one person. We also have a, another interested party that does financing for aircraft and we can, we can lease land to them. We have some, we have property that's, we call it on your side, inside the fence. We also have property that's outside the fence that we can, we can lease to these other parties. And then as town manager indicated, there's some other people that want to build some more T hangars. So it's a great opportunity, it brings the planes in. Basically, we, we lease the property, the land, doing research, I talked to a consulting company that has done a lot of evaluations for different airports, Plymouth being a large one and some others. The land lease price is basically per square foot and it runs, it's, you know, it's around thirty-five to forty-five cents a square foot. So we're looking at targeting right in the middle at forty cents a square foot. Basically takes the size of the building plus ten feet around or the parking lot, whatever they're using for cars, ten feet around, that square footage. That fee, the annual fee would go to the enterprise account at the airport. The town however can tax the building and the tax, the town gets tax revenue from, from the building, the structure. So the buildings all have to be approved by, you know, the building inspector and through all the departments you have to do for building. So basically, this seventeen-page agreement that we have in front of us is draft for that. We had a couple additions we'll put in as far as construction with the, what we want for specifications for underneath the asphalt and pavement. And if people are building any kind of aprons, we have to, the FAA is very critical on that, so we'll put some more modifications in for that, but that would be on the backside. So the commission's gone through this a number of times and this is, I think, the final draft and we'd like to bring it up to the town council, kind of tell them what we're doing and how it works and, and get your approval so we can move forward and bring some more businesses into, into the town of Southbridge at the airport.
Any discussion? Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair Treu. So the last hangar we, we built, the town owned, correct?
Yes.
We rented yearly?
Monthly.
Monthly, we control all of that, correct? What the rent, if you don't mind asking for that?
A T hangar is running three hundred and forty dollars a month right now.
How many, how many was fitting on that thing?
Oh, we got six, six T hangars, we're building another six right now, that's what we're building, so we'll have twelve.
So, no, no, I wanna talk about the one we built.
Oh, which one?
The similar size to the one, the guy who's gonna lease the land?
Oh, the leased a hundred by hundred, we don't have one that big. But the biggest we have is like fifty by fifty.
So what's the, what's the rent on that, it's gonna be only the property?
We aren't even gonna rent the property, so.
Yeah, how much?
So ten thousand square feet times forty cents a square foot.
I mean, should we bring this number with you?
Is the four thousand dollars.
A year?
A year. Yeah.
A year.
Without the year?
Hold on, the one we're building, we're building or was approved, we got money from the federal, correct?
Yes.
Help us build it.
Yes.
So we're gonna rent the property hundred by hundred for four thousand a year? We'll be in control by somebody out of town for twenty years. Economy change, building change, money change, what, we don't wait another year or so, we can get another grant, build it and control our own property, not let somebody else come from outside and, and give us four thousand dollars a year?
It doesn't exactly work that way on federal grants. So basically, our airport gets approximately a hundred fifty thousand a year from the federal government. We can save that up and go towards a project. We have a number of projects. Our next project we wanna do is the apron, the old apron that we have by the fuel farm. And basically, to rebuild that is about two point five million. So we have to save up our funds, the, we get funds from the federal government, we have to save up for those. When we have a big project like that, they'll put in some extra funds, the state will put in funds and then the town has to put in five percent. However, they will not give you funds to build money, money producing, money, income-producing buildings. So we're using, we just got, we use, we're using federal funds to build this T hangar right now. We're locked out from any monies, any projects for next three and a half years.
Three and a half years.
So we can't, so.
The land we're gonna rent to the gentleman, whatever the company, how many plane would fit in?
You probably can't fit four planes in there.
So he's allowed to rent it to somebody else for a plan and generate income, correct?
Basically, it has to be aviation use only. He can't put bikes in there, motorcycles.
No, 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 I know, I know, I can get another plane, somebody, my friend, rent it there and pay me rent to me. I paid the town four thousand, I can rent three other spa and collect the rent because. Okay, well, thank you, I'm not supportive.
Counselor Chanier.
Explain the twenty twenty, Rick, if you could. It's, it's twenty years, it becomes a town or is it renewable?
Well, it's renewable for forty years. So instead of a twenty-year lease, I mean, this building, you know, we're paying one point six million dollars to put up this T hangar we're putting up. This building here is probably gonna be well over a million dollars. So at three hundred fifty dollars, four planes, there's no way you can financially pay for that yourself or build a building and pay for it. So by base, basically here, the idea is that they have, they have four, up to forty years to use the property and after that it becomes town-owned building and the town can rent it back at any rate they want or, or do whatever they like to do with a building.
If I may continue. The previous building was the airport payment, correct?
Yes.
And I don't remember when I was on the, did he pay rent? Or is it just a turnover at the end of twenty years?
At the, I'm not sure how that lease was, I don't have a copy of that lease.
I don't, I don't remember.
I don't know if there was a renter, huh?
I remember there was a renter, I know it was a turnover at the end of twenty years it became the property of the town. And the airport manager at that point in time, the way the contract was read, he got to charge the rent and collect the funds, not the town. But that has since changed, since you guys have been there. The, when I was on commission, FAA wouldn't allow T hangars to be built with federal funds. We were, had to do all the fundraising ourselves and those kind of things because of, we were limited. And it sounds like there's still limited on the amount of funds that can go towards it. But I think it's a, it's a good thing for the town to, I mean, a hundred by a hundred, bringing air traffic in, bringing in the larger planes that we always hoped for because of our local businesses or potentially future businesses. Am I happy with the four thousand a year? Maybe not, but knowing when I went on Lloyd's hangar, it was a morton building, well-constructed. I'm sure that the commission's gonna require this to be kind of like the same type of construction and I think it'll be a plus for the town.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you.
Go.
I, I think we do one big mistake. I think we've given our land for free. Either if the town take a loan and we build it ourselves, still better in twenty years. Four thousand, that's, that's what you guys looking and I think three hundred dollars a month is still cheap to rent those, law up there, access and privates and nobody's checking what other airport to rent in.
We do.
It's, are we comparing or we're less or we're mores and what's the difference between different airports?
We're basically in the middle, if towards maybe the lower side, but we're trying to build, Worcester again is probably the most expensive in the area and they're pushing, they're kind of pushing generally aviation out, that's why people are looking at Southbridge. But we do look across the, the area and try to stay within, you know, what other, other areas are renting their, their hangars for.
Well, I, again, I think we've given our property for free, twenty year for four thousand dollars. I mean, how, how much is that if you do the math? For the land? I mean, you give them a security, you give them a, a private access, you maintain the property around theirs. Like I say, life is changing and you're putting control on you for twenty plus another twenty. What's the damage if you, if you decide to break the lease for any reason? What's the damage? Would you have to pay the gentleman?
We have, we have no reason, we're trying to develop the airport and this is one way to bring in people, planes and development, you know, without, without, you know, without using our own funds or trying to obtain our own funds. You know, the thing, if they break the lease, we own the building, we take it over.
It's written down?
It's, uh.
Written down?
It's in, it's all, you know, there's legal, there's legal document parts of the lease as far as, you know, what would happen if they stop paying or things like that.
What, if we wanna, if we wanna break the lease, what the damage on us?
Um, I don't, I couldn't tell you, I don't have the details in front of me, I have to look at the lease and look at it.
You think it's, it's, do you think it's right to give somebody control of our land for four years?
The controlling of, the footprint under their building and not controlling the land. They still have to operate under all the rules and regulations of the Southbridge Airport. So that's, you know, you know, planes in and out, what they can do, who can be on the property, they have to go through, through the, the Southbridge.
Any increase in every years or no flat rate for twenty years?
It's, uh, it would be, no, the first, uh, there are some increases in the rate, I'll have to look at and see what's in here. I think there's a, this has a, town manager could probably explain it better, it has a C P I rate increase.
Yes, the C P I is similar that we do with the sewer and water plants that, or whatever the term period is of, it's a two-year.
One percent, two percent?
No, you take the C P I, so it could go to a factor of between two and five percent. Um, I don't believe we put it into a cap on that one.
It says in, in no event shall the increase be less than two percent every three years.
Every three years. Similar to what we do with the.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Treu. Counselor Lazo.
I understand everything that Joe Dow was saying. From the business standpoint, maybe it's not as aggressive as we'd like it. But, but my whole idea with the airport, a while ago when you were there, you're the commissioner with the, Mr. Plof and stuff, was development of the airport. It's more, it's not a moneymaker as much as it's a partnership to develop that airport is to get the, the Worcester people to come in and invest into Southbridge. And again, I say it on all the things, if we become a destination, Monday night we voted on a study to get a road access to come in to access Southbridge. We're not sure where that's gonna be, might be a regional dealing. But again, we're sitting on an airport and to get permitted for an airport right now is like tough. And we have a developed airport where Rick and I commend you on the development today on the fuel cell, fuel farm and all the stuff that we went through over the years. For me, I think look at it more of a partnership. You want these guys coming in, investing into Southbridge to take ownership into it. Yeah, we own the airport, we get that. But the thing is, for them to come here, they become part of your airport, they become part of it, I mean, as a partnership. And I, I think, you know, for me, I'm, I'm in favor of this. This is, this is just another step from where we started a while ago. So I'm, I'm looking at it as become a destination. You've got Amazon, I mean, I know at one point we, I went to Washington DC years ago and they were looking air to ground, could Southbridge expand, you know, the runways, a lot of talk. And then it fizzled out. My thing is, you stayed on board and constantly developed the airport and I think that you done a fine job. This is a big step and I, I'm in favor of it because I want more people at the airport. And if we're not making what we, we're playing the federal grant money against this grant money, you know more about that than I do. It's a little different compared to the private sector, but I still think it'll be a good thing for Southbridge, in the one way.
Counselor Dow and Counselor Chanier.
Thank you, Chair Treu. Who's gonna pay for extend the, to, to roll to the airplane, who's gonna pay for that?
For what?
To extend the.
Runway.
Runway.
That would be a, a federal grant eventually.
So it's on us, correct, to extend it? If, if either they don't give us money, we'll sign a lease for that, for the gentleman to come and build the anchor, we're responsible to make sure the airplane lay and fly from our airport, correct?
No, this, his planes can land on our existing runway. So the extension of the runway is a future, is something, you know, we're looking at ten years down the road. But the more planes that can use a longer runway, faster, bigger, even, you know, light jets that can come in here, they can't come in fully loaded now because we're at, you know, of our length of our runway. By adding five hundred feet, it just allows a bigger envelope of airplanes to use our airport.
How much we have land left open in that, you know, for future? How much?
For a future.
How many acres, how many?
For what building?
Buildings or extend, what, what we have for size up there?
We got ten acres.
Ten acres, so it could, it could be so quick, correct?
Uh, no, it's, it's, you know, there's, there's not people knocking down the doors.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think to get some people out of Worcester, I think if we get this one hangar, we may get some other people that may be interested in coming as well.
But in, in your, in your mind, it's not, you don't think it's cheap, four thousand dollars a, a year to give them a security?
You're, you're looking at it as from, from owning property in like a street or somewhere else. Up here, this is, we're looking at the going rate for this area of Massachusetts. That's what we're looking at. And so it's again, it's about bringing revenue in, it brings in tax dollars for the building, which we don't have to pay for, so if they build a building, that, that comes in and then it gets more use in the airport, we get fuel sales, it gets, keeps the mechanics that we have at the airport busy, we have detail operation at the, at the airport now that keeps them busy. So it's, it expands, expands the footprint and makes it a more of a, a place for people that wanna come, that in aviation that wanna come.
So, so the, the lease will say it can only stores airplane, not repairs or detail in your facility?
Uh, we can do detail, that's a different facility, but.
No, no, but he can, he can get his own because now he rents a piece, he have his own building, he can bring his own mechanic, his own, to his own plane inside the building?
He can bring, that's part of FAA, you can work on your own plane. You can, you can work on your own plane, but chances are, uh, these planes, he'll wanna have a certified mechanic just because of the complications of them and things like that.
But he can get his own mechanics.
He can, he can bring his own in or he can fly somewhere and get his own, it's just like an automobile, you can go, go to you or anybody, different places.
He can bring it to the, to the, to our facility, to the airport, to our.
He can bring in and work on his plane, but not put it, not build a facility. He can't build a repair shop, is that what you mean?
No, I know, but it is a four plane, that he united all?
Yes.
Or a guy and fix those, four airplane inside?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Dow, or Counselor Chanier.
Just a couple more questions. The mechanics can only can work on his, his planes that he own. Otherwise, he would be in competition with the airport mechanic, am I correct? The owner of the, of the T, the hangar necessarily doesn't have to own the planes. But if you do work on those planes, it's the individuals that would bring the mechanic in for their plane alone, correct?
You have, the plane, the people that wanna build a hangar own planes, so they can bring in, they can bring in their mechanics that they have now, I don't know where their mechanics are located, so they can bring their mechanics in to fix their planes. And anybody, I can do that, I got my plane there, I can bring any mechanic in, I want to work on my plane, so that's just, you know, the same everywhere.
The other thing, we're in, we're kind of in direct competition with Fitchburg Airport because aren't they doing a hangar project there presently? And I'd much rather have them come here than go to Fitchburg.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar with.
I believe Fitchburg is doing it.
Yeah.
I think they're doing, they're doing a complimentary kind of hangar project.
Yeah.
I think they're doing a condo project and I believe they're doing one of these lease projects too. So I, I mean, I'd much rather have it here, potentially utilize maybe Amazon will see the light and maybe the, I don't know, they say it's Walmart, I don't know what the other, what other one is, but I, I just think it's a good thing, I'm done.
Counselor Provost.
So how, how long is our airport runway right now?
Thirty-five.
Chair Treu, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thirty-five hundred square, uh, thirty-five hundred feet.
Thirty, what's the max we can possibly get?
Uh, we, four thousand.
Four thousand?
We'll get, yeah.
That's our max?
Probably a little bit longer, but we, we have design for four thousand.
What's the classification of our airport too? Is it A, B, C, D?
Well, it's general aviation, we are on, they go by size of planes. So right now we're in the, the small to mid-size classification, I can't give you the exact classification, there's a number for it.
All right, thank you.
We should have the master plan available for everybody in the council fairly shortly, we're just waiting for it to be printed or emailed to us, so we'll have that, so I can review that.
I got a couple of questions. The, um, the runway currently at thirty-five hundred square feet, thirty-five hundred feet, rather, um, that can handle, that cannot handle jets, right?
It can.
It can handle jets?
Yes, small jets.
Small jets, okay, but we don't have jet fuel up there, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and one of the, one of the benefits of if this company from Worcester were to come, they would be bringing in turboprops, which would require jet fuel, right?
That's correct.
So we would then want to get, put in jet fuel and I believe you said it was a goal of airports to bring in jet fuel at some point, correct?
It is.
Okay, why, why haven't we been able to bring in jet fuel to this point?
Uh, basically because of funding from the Mass D O T and federal government, it's kind of like the chicken or the egg, you know? If we put jet fuel, are they gonna come? We don't know, now we have turboprops here, now we can say we do have turboprops, so that, that will begin the process of saying, okay, we, there, there is a service for the, for the jet fuel. When we put the pad out for the aviation fuel that's out there now, the pad is twice as big as it needed, so we basically just have to buy, you know, a fuel tank system and put on top for jet fuel. And so once, if we get these people that come in with a turboprop, so it'll create some revenue or sales and then we can go back to Mass D O T and FAA and talk about jet fuel at the airport.
So, and these planes that they would be bringing in could use, they would be small enough to use that thirty-five hundred.
Yes.
Runway.
Yes.
And if we went to four thousand feet, what would that, what would, what would that give us? I mean, I mean, different class of aircraft?
It's a, it's a larger class of aircraft and, you know, it's a, it's a small jet. For instance, I know Marshfield, as I talked to someone the other day, they have, they have people that they rent, do jet rentals from there. So they're doing Pilatus planes that can hold like eight people and things like that, smaller planes. Well, it's a turboprop, it's a good sized plane and they also small jets, it's just the, all planes are, when they're classified or when their, the FAA gives them their certification, when they're classified or when their, the FA gives them their certification, it's all measured on, you know, runway length and weight. So a large jet could land here, but they couldn't land, they couldn't take off fully loaded. They'd have to take off light. So by having the extra five hundred feet, that allows them to come in fully loaded or take off fully loaded.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick comment. I've been watching the airport from the beginning of time. You know, at my first tour duty and Rick, you've always been an advocate for the airport. A lot of times you come in front of the council, I'm sitting there, it's all great to me. But I think the intent of what we're trying to do is grow the airport. And if it's four thousand feet after that, can we go further? Can we, you know, is there land out there open off the end that we could buy? You know, this is just the way I think in everything we do in Southbridge. I think you've been doing a fine job with it and I, and I can support this. Um, this, this project for a further expansion of the use of the airport. Build it and they will come.
Nothing else? Then all those in favor? Opposed?
Two to one in favor.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda, agenda item number six, review and discuss the Cannabis Control Commission requirement for a municipal equity bylaw.
Thank you. So this was just more of a point of information. It's something that's gonna have to come forward to the general government. Uh, we notified by the Cannabis Commission, uh, Town of Southbridge, a lot with many, many, um, communities in the Commonwealth. Uh, there's a requirement for social, uh, equity, um, standards for municipalities. Unfortunately, we are required to have this. Um, and doing some research, uh, I want to clarify and, uh, this goes to the next one too, is because we're doing, uh, talking about bylaws. Uh, we may have the ability to just issue a policy as opposed to a bylaw. Um, and I will bring that forward. Uh, Town Chelton has a, a very good, uh, policy as does Framingham, um, and requirements. And it's more to, uh, establish what we do, community host agreements, that we take into consideration those that, uh, for equity. Uh, the state is based on equity. Those are individuals that have, may have had, um, some involvement in, in the legal system and are trying to come out of it, uh, social diversity. So there's all kinds of policies that I'm just putting that on radar. Sent it out to you for your review and we'll bring it back at a next meeting. So I did more for a point of information on that. I have.
All right. Any comments on this? This is, uh, uh, in the packet that, I don't know if everybody saw it. There was a, a model municipal equity bylaw ordinance. And there is a provision in the, in the cannabis law that require, that favors licensing to, uh, how do they put it? To encourage full participation in the marijuana, marijuana industry by people from communities that were disproportionately harmed by marijuana prohibition and enforcement. We, the town, I guess, I guess, we do not determine that, that is, that status is determined by the Cannabis Commission. So when they make the application, they can be considered, um, a, uh, a person from a community that was disproportionately harmed by marijuana prohibition and enforcement. Um, so that person would then get their application through to the, um, Cannabis Commission. And then they would come here to try to establish a marijuana business and they would have this status already approved by the Cannabis Commission. That's my understanding of how it would work.
And, and Southbridge is one of the communities, uh, listed. There are thirty communities in Massachusetts that are disproportionately impacted areas. Geographical areas that have been disproportionately harmed by marijuana prohibition and enforcement. And the town of Southbridge is listed as one of those communities.
So I think, you know, the, the, the main themes in the, um, i- in the regulation here that's proposed are that there's a transparent process. And it basically, really just generally that, that the process is fair and we're considering, um, uh, uh, these folks that are, have this status. I'm going through here. I don't like the regulation.
I didn't think you would.
Um, there's a, I mean, there's all sorts of reporting requirements and, um, data, uh, collection, uh, bottom line creates a unfunded mandate. Cause we're not getting any funds for this. So we would have to put it on the town to either hire somebody part-time to collect this information or to, uh, uh, create a, pu- make it part of somebody's job description. So bottom line is, I mean, I, 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 I don't, this regulation is much too, much too detailed, much too complicated. I think a policy is probably, if we can go a policy route, I think that's probably the best, the, the best avenue rather than adopt.
Right.
Adopt this. Um, and we only have, uh, a handful of marijuana businesses in town as it is. I would venture to say that in a town this size, uh, the market is pretty saturated. So with the, with what we've got already, but, so.
So all our four licenses by bylaw are issued. So nobody can be issued another license until one either gets transferred. So those host community agreements are out there. We have, uh, one that we just did the host community agreement for Moraziba, which is gonna be a courier, uh, down on East Main Street. And then we have the individual that just we've worked on that will come forward, um, that's expression of interest, uh, to do a courier and manufacturing, uh, ju- manufacturing at, um, North Street, the North Street. So he just sent that to me Monday. So I have to do some tweaks, so that will go through the progress of this. And I think that's pretty much where we're at anyway. So all, we just negotiated all our host agreements renewals for five years. So unless somebody gives one up, we're not gonna be negotiating another host agreement outside of the, uh, manufacturing one.
Okay. So why are we on this list for damaging somebody?
That's just the state gave out the list of thirty communities.
So we damaged somebody?
Disproportionately enforced marijuana.
Is that because we, of the bylaw?
No, no, no. It has nothing to do with the bylaw. It's the enforcement of marijuana.
It's because we have a, we, we have, um, a, uh, a high Hispanic population here. That's why. All right. And Hispanic, the Hispanic population as well as the African American population are, have been, um, pretty much deemed as disproportionately affected by the enforcement of marijuana.
Is that like the environmental justice community kind of sign, same kind of thing? That we're at, is that kind of the same thing? We are an environmental justice community.
I don't know what that means. Environmental justice?
How can I explain that?
No, you're, 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 you're right. Yeah.
We don't see people well.
I, I, I don't know why we don't look at it as American. Doesn't matter what color or what you're from, American. I think that's an excuse people hold.
Right, well, I mean, you know, you know, as a, as a, as a lawyer, I can tell you that there, you know, if you look at, uh, if you look at the population generally in the prison system, uh, it is predominant where, you know, African Americans make up twelve percent of the entire population. They make up thirty to forty percent of the prison, prison population, depending on what state you're in.
I didn't agree to that.
Well, no, no, but, but this is just, I mean, it's just that, that one of, one of the issues is, you know, where there are poor communities, um, poor communities tend to have a higher rate of crime. Higher, communities with higher rates of crime get policed more than, than, than the communities that have lower rates of crime. And as a result, I think that is at least one factor in, uh, in why the numbers are so skewed. It's the same thing with Hispanics. Hispanics make up about twenty percent of the population, uh, in the United States. And they represent, um, you know, thirty, forty percent of the prison population. So it's, it's, it, that's, that's just, those are just statistics, but that's where all this is coming from. Um, so, um, it's far, but I, I mean, getting back to this regulation, I, I don't think it's necessary personally. I mean, I think if we had a policy.
A policy, yeah.
That was, that was consistent with the, with the regulation, um, and that would be probably a better choice.
Yeah. And just to be clear, it's, Southbridge isn't, uh, singled out as having to have it. Every community has to have it in the Commonwealth. So it's not, it's just that where.
Oh, I understand.
It's that group. But I, I, I think, looking at, when I was researching it, after I got the memo from the CCC, uh, last week, was that, um, Tom did a good job. And I know we talked the other night about the website, you know, they have a really good, uh, the policy is pretty clear about the one-to-one and the evaluation and how they go about evaluating it. I think, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. I think they've done a good job of putting that forward as a policy. And I think the other town Framingham has similar, so I think we can craft something pretty quickly to bring forward as a policy. You know, I'll make sure that I check with, uh, our legal counsel first and have them just take a quick look at it, um, that does the specialty on the, uh, on these. Go from there. I'll, I'll, I'll work on the policy then and bring it forward if that's the case.
All right, thank you. All right. Any further discussion on this matter? All right, then discussion's closed. We'll move on to the agenda item seven. Agenda item seven, review and discuss town general bylaw revisions.
Thank you. So I just put this, um, just to give the premise that we really do need to get people and a bylaw committee formed sooner than later. And the, and the reason why is one, the charter, um, is posted and we have conflict between the charter and the bylaws with a number of people on, on certain, uh, committees. We have either this policy or bylaw, so we went the bylaw route to, to look at that. Um, also, um, we have been approached by, about putting into an order into a bylaw for the manufacturer of hemp products. That's become an issue and that we're working with the Board of Health on that. That came forward. Counsel Adams has been in touch with us as well. We got that, so we're gonna take a look at this hemp issue. It was brought forward by Green Meadows. Hemp is not regulated by the Cannabis Commission, but it can have an intoxicating effect just like some other products. So, uh, City of Springfield is banned and all that. So there's talk about bringing that forward as a possible bylaw. And also, when we were doing, uh, my office was compiling a list of, we were cross-checking number of people on subcommittees, uh, not subcommittees, but boards, commissions and what commissions we had out there. It was discovered, uh, that we have in our bylaws, section seven dash two hundred, operation of motor vehicles, traffic rules and regulations. And everybody's very familiar with the fact that we have a parking commission, right? Uh, not a parking, but a traffic and parking commission, right? We have members pointed to that. But when I went to look at how many members, how does that make up out of the bylaws? I found this, uh, and then when I went to find the specific traffic commission in the bylaws, you know how we have our boards and commissions? We don't have it in the bylaws. It's gone. I went to Matty and said, where did it go? It has to be somewhere. So we're trying to do research, but we're gonna have to get it either reestablished in the bylaws. Cause the bylaw for this specific section, section on traffic rules and regulations states very clearly the traffic and parking commission established in section three dash two two one of these bylaws. Right? Establishes what they do as a parking commission. But three dash two two one is, is the trustees of soldiers and sailors. As three, and there's no section at all for the traffic. So those are the things that I, I'm just asking the council if they could get that committee going. Soon, I know Counsel Kelly wants that, but if we can get that as soon as possible to really get through these. Cause I think what's gonna end up happening is we're gonna do these bylaw reviews, but at the same time, we're gonna, as a council, Mr. Chair, uh, we're gonna have to start thinking about another charter review because you're now at the five, six year mark where every five years. So I just brought up this conversation.
But even if you don't have a, a bylaw committee, the general government could change that bylaw without the committee, right?
Right, by, but by our charter, you have to have a bylaw review.
No, no, I understand.
Oh, yeah, you could, yes, you could. But I, I think it just.
Changing bylaws is not stall because we don't have.
No, 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 but I just think it's, no, no, I, I, no, I probably won't take it, but I just think if we're gonna do it rather than piecemeal it, just let's go through it and make the changes and.
We'll do it, we'll get it done.
Can we put it on, on the agenda for the town council agenda for the next meeting?
You have a point there if you have some members that.
If we have members, I mean, uh, we've been talking, different people, I mean, we have to put something out there, uh, next meeting I'll announce it with. I thought I already did when.
Well, we have, so if, if you have.
Nobody's coming forward. It's always the same people and, you know, it's just like one person serves like nineteen boards. You know, you'd like to have people that are planning, people that are finance, health. But it's, um, it's tough to get people to come out and volunteer. Volunteer numbers are down, even on citizen members and stuff like that.
Or if we made it in a subcommittee of council.
I mean, I could just, you know, it says, well, the charter is explicit, by a member board, for it to be appointed.
Right.
I appointed. Correct, Jack?
I, I have to double check.
Really, I, I thought I.
Yes, correct.
Yes, it is.
That's good.
But you're good at pointing.
We'll, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll work on it. We'll get it done.
Okay.
We'll put that one in the fast lane.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, then. The next item is the German?
So.
All those in favor?